Good morning. It is October 29th, 2024, and welcome to the Clickitack County Commissioners' Regular Meeting. We do have Mr. Anderson online, so we have a quorum, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repolite for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a quorum out here too.
Okay, thank you. We have our usual visitors, which is good. Thank you. So, Mr. Anderson, I need approval of the business agenda.
Do we have anything to add to the business agenda from what was said on the blue card?
I do not.
Okay, I don't either. Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
And I'll step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We're lucky now. We move to public comment. So we'll start in the room. If you wish to speak, you come forward and give us your name and where you're from. Raise your hand and we'll call on you. Okay, we're going to start in the room this morning. Good morning.
Candy Bat, yes, in Goldendale. And I just want to tell everybody to be sure and vote. Is it God-given right? You have no right to complain if you don't vote, but do not mail your vote November 5th to the United States Post Office here in Goldendale, because that well goes to Portland. It will be marked a six. It will not count. So do not mail your vote unless you walk in at post office and have them hands down, but don't do that, okay?
Thank you very much. Online, is there someone wishing to comment this morning? Raise your hand or unmute yourself. Good morning, Roger Nichols.
Oh, good morning. I see two Rogers up here today. I have a quick one, and that is I heard a rumor that the FAA has settled or approved something having to do with the well at the airport. And if that's true, can you confirm it? And if it is, can you release the statement giving the conditions involved? Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Okay, so next we'll go online again. Please raise your hand or unmute so we can see you. 7211.
Greg Wagner with C. On October 15th, I made a comment regarding the franchise agreement being done illegally because the commissioners failed to notify the auditor to post the legal notices as required by law. Follow-up comment from Jake Anderson was, the hearing was done legally because Public Works posted the notices. I've since asked Mr. Anderson in two emails to provide the RCWs that confirmed his statement, and he hasn't provided them, and they don't exist. So this just goes on to confirm what I also said during the October 15th statement, that Mr. Anderson will do and say anything to help and protect Cypress Creek Carriage or Solar Project. So obviously, I don't believe he told the truth when he said Public Works is the one that posted the notices, making it illegal hearing. I'd also like to know why is there only one hearing today for these battery moratoriums? In the past, we've had one at six o'clock and one at one o'clock. This time, we're only having one at one o'clock. And this excludes a lot of people who work all day and can't attend the one o'clock meeting because there is no six o'clock meeting. So I'd like to know why we're not having two hearings as we've had in the past for many other hearings that were conducted by this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. So in the room and back online. Raise your hand. If you could raise your hand or unmute yourself so we can call on you.
I'm muting, but I don't think I can raise.
Hold on just a second. There you go. Roger Gadway, try again.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm Roger Gadway from Pittsburgh, Washington, or Snowden area, actually. I would like to continue the discourse about what is meant by public interest initiated at the last week's meeting. I appreciate Commissioner Christopher's direct answer that he did not believe that the planning commission's findings was the meaning of public interest. However, I am concerned that Commissioners Zohar and Anderson chose to deflect in the responses and did not answer the question. Zone changes, like most planning decisions, are required to be in the best interest of the public. This means that when interested parties, like the person proposing the zone change, wish to take an action that benefits them personally, it must also be found to be in the best interest of the public. It does not benefit financially from the decision. The planning commission decision, in effect, means that only the parties standing to benefit financially from the decision matters. The three neighbors testifying that the zone change will be damaging to the community apparently do not account. Also asked if that definition of public interest was appropriate for underplaying decisions that will be made in the future. No response. There seems to be a pattern in how decisions are made. We've learned that the county is proposing the aggregate protection overlays on the supply to the entire county, making it a protected right to mine gravel or other resources anywhere in the county. Was the public consulted in any way about this? No, the county just silently prepared this and then sprang it on us. This happens with other projects too, on under canvas and others. If the new overlay zone affects the entire county, then everyone needs to be notified about it. Actually, I don't believe the county has even created this zone. Apparently, they are just implementing it, and then we'll figure out what it is. How can anyone be prepared to comment on such a situation? Those of us who live here should know what is proposed for the county's development, have a voice in approving it or not. You are elected to represent our best interests, not to impose your own secret plans on us. I didn't invite the commissioners to discuss what the public interest means, but they think the citizens of the county should be in the future. They're the only one there to respond today, Lori, but.
Not a problem, Roger. Thank you so much. In the room. Okay, so online. Is there anyone else online? Unmute yourself or raise your hand, please. 4901.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Sheri from Houston, and I wish I could have heard Roger better, more clearly. It seemed on my phone that it was breaking up quite a bit. I felt he had pertinent, what I did catch, I felt it was pertinent to the discussion of the people, with the people of this county and with our Clickitack County Commissioners or our county, the people who say they rule us. And, you know, I like to look at the broad points. Ever since I've gotten involved with watching what the county does with under canvas, and again, I want to put on record, it's a death trap, that location, that road is a death trap, and that I do not believe is in the best public interest, because whose loved one will die, you know? So anyway, anything I've seen from our county and I've participated in, you haven't listened to the people. I believe you're given what you're supposed to do, and no matter what the people say, you implement it, whether it's special favors for under canvas, for Uncle John's Bridge, for mining, you know, like I said, I think that it's already been mined. It's ridiculous. You know, it just seems to be special favors. So I come back down to, who do you work for? Whose interest do you have in mind? Is it the public interest, or is it the corporation's interest? And, you know, are you acting in a political capacity or in a corporate capacity? Because we do know that there's two entities. We've discussed this many times. But in the end, when the people tell you what they don't want, they take their money, they fight, they fight the government, the government takes the money they take from us to fight us back, you know? And again, let's go back to accountability. Who do we go to? Greg points out, all these things you guys do against state RCWs, break the rules all the time, but we don't know who to go to. You know, you say you're governed by the state, that you have to obey the state whenever the state says. Well, so who do we go to? And Dan says to vote? No, I want to go to someone today. Like, could you tell us, do we go to Secretary of State? Do we go to Attorney General? Is there oversight of you guys to say, are you guys doing it right? Are you guys doing your own procedures right? You know? So anyway, I'd like to know, who do the people go to to say, hey, Papa State, is this little corporation doing it right? So anyway, I don't, I witnessed, you don't listen to the people. So let's hope, maybe it'll change someday.
Thank you, Sheri. Ready? Good morning, Kaylee.
Good morning, Lori. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Oh, just sitting in Portland, waiting for surgery, but I just wanted to come on and say how disappointed I am to see two empty chairs next to you. You know, it's obvious they were coming into the election and everything, but there's still work to be done in our county, and I hope that the citizens are watching to see who's still working for the county. But for the under canvass things, I've done a little bit of research on it, and there's really not a lot that can be done at this point, unfortunately. The commissioners were handed this from a previous board, it's my understanding. And so, just kind of in respect to Sheri's comments, that, you know, some things have already been pushed through to a point where our current board can't pull them back. And Lori's only one person sitting up there. So I'm looking forward to a new year and a new board that will hopefully come together and work together and get some of this stuff taken care of. But yeah, I just kind of wanted to mention how disappointed I was to see that Lori's the only one that showed up to work for the county today. So that is it for today, and thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Kaylee. Take care. Okay, no one in the room? Just waiting. Okay, no, that's, it's okay. Good morning, Lisa.
Hey, good morning, Lori. Yes, thank you. Thank you for showing up this morning and representing our county. And so, you know, I've been a registered voter in this county for a little over 12 years now, and I've had the opportunity to observe some of the ballot counting process. And what I would say is, we've got a great auditor's office. We have an exceptional auditor's office, and I think they do a fantastic job. As of yesterday, though, Clickitack County was the last in the state for ballot returns statistically. But when I spoke with the auditor's office, they are doing their job. They have received a lot of ballots. It's just a matter of them being able to process them. But this is kind of a trend that I've seen over the last 12 years, when I've observed the ballot counting, is that our ballot processors are not being isolated and protected. They are being asked to handle our votes, you know, our ballots, which are so important, but they're also being asked to still answer questions, to answer the phone, and try to deal with the daily business of the auditor's office. So a question that I have is just, you know, is that something that can be looked at in the future? You know, as the election season rolls around, how can we better isolate and protect our ballot processors so that they are focused on one thing and one thing only, and that is our votes? And then the second question I have is, you've probably heard about the ballot boxes in Vancouver and Portland that had the incendiary devices thrown into them, destroying several hundred ballots, in particular in one box. I'm just curious, you know, what do we have in place right now that can prevent copycats? You know, do we have the potential of any video, you know, do we have video cameras watching our ballot boxes, number one? And then, number two, are there preventative measures to ensure that no one can set our votes on fire? Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Anthony Rizzi, did you have your hand up this morning?
Yes, I did. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, my thing, first of all, I am not happy with the way this system works, because we talk in the morning, and you guys come on and hammer us in the public, and then there's no way for us to rebut that until the following week. So I want to come on here and say that you and Jake attacking me because your numbers, you're trying to hide all these numbers. And a great example of that is, in last week, when you called Jen down to come give a report real quick, because she wasn't in the room, in that was $12,000 for our auditor. Now, I would like to, and it has to do with the transition, I would like to know, how did that number come up? Because she gets paid a regular wage, so why would the transition require another $12,000 for the auditor? That, so there is another creep of extra money that are being spent for this transition to a B O C C jail, which shouldn't have happened in the first place, but, and it was only going to cost X amount. Well, now you guys are really going over that. And you're also bringing other monies over into, that should have been in the 2025, but you're bringing them in the 2024 budget. So that's now gone from 1.7 to over $2 million, and it's, we're not done. I mean, you still have another thing coming up where you're going to spend more money. So this jail thing, you guys have just completely blown away the numbers, and then you don't give me a chance to talk about them, because, you know, the way the system's worked up. So I had to wait till this week and to say, you know, you guys, you can attack me saying I don't have the right numbers, but you know what? I think I do. And you guys are trying to hide money all over the place, trying to get it in and not make it that this jail transition's actually going to cost a taxpayer one and a half to $2 million more than you suspected. So thank you very much for the time, and I guess I'll see you next week.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzi. Okay, anyone else? You'd like to speak? We have a little time left. If you'd like to raise your hand or unmute.
Yeah, I want to speak.
Just a second.
I can wait if there's someone.
Good morning, Gabrielle. Nope.
Awesome. First of all, shout out, thank you for coming to Commissioner Zohar. Thank you for coming to the Commerce Department meeting. It was a great roundtable. Also, a shout out to the Economic Development Department for showing up, not only at the Commerce Department meeting and bringing good information, but also the representative coming into the Childcare Committee that I got to attend yesterday. I want to say that it was impactful when 12 people that attended that meeting spoke, the first words out of their mouth were the need for childcare. I think it's also notable that the possibility of a solution to childcare that could come out of the public school districts, similar to what Kudriver has, where they have a childcare in their school district. And if you look at school districts, they are set up in regulation for children. They also have access to state and federal dollars and local dollars. And I think that exploring that possibility to address the childcare desert in Clickitack County is important. I think it's important for elected officials and governance to see childcare as a core function. It is something that the population is needing. It ties the thread into housing. It ties a thread into populations for the school district. It ties a thread into economic stability. It ties a thread into businesses, being able to keep and entice new workers. And it also is about the mental health of families, especially mothers and fathers, single fathers as well. It is an issue of safety for children, and it is the money that we invest in keeping them on a good path. And it is the general generational wealth that families would accrue, being able to work. And I just feel like the noise around childcare is deafening, and the lack of action is deafening, and it needs to change. The other thing I want to say is, you know, I babysit toddlers with better emotional regulation than some elected officials. And finally, a shout out to mama bears that protect their families. I think that the horizon of a new election and a board that is cohesive and working for the county is imperative, and I look forward to the election season. So I just, I just want to hammer that solutions on childcare can be created if we're really, if we finally make those steps that we're actually doing something, and we get out of the realm of just talking about it. And action is, you know, for most of this society, we've been waiting for 50 years. So I think it's time for leaders to lead and actually produce something so that families can breathe and go to work and do what they want to do in their lives, and that their children are safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gabby. Anyone else online this morning? Heather Joby, our auditor.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to take my three minutes to address some of the things that have been previously said. Mr. Rizzi, I am not getting $12,000. We did add $12,000 to the auditor's non-departmental budget to cover interim expenses like background checks and things that don't have a place to be paid for at the moment, because without going into all of the nuances of county budgets, the jail budget is still within the Sheriff's Department. There won't be an official budget for the new Department of Corrections until the supplemental process, but things have to get paid for in the interim. So that's how we handled it. With regard to the recent events in the ballot boxes, we are looking into anti-incendiary devices for our ballot boxes, and we have grant funding that would pay for that. So we will likely go down that path. The place we moved the Goldendale box to now has 24-hour security footage, and we are looking at moving other ballot boxes or arranging for video footage so that we have those boxes covered 24/7. And Gabrielle Gilbert, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Anyone else online this morning? We're almost running short on time. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand or unmute. And I have our favorite last person in the room. If you'd like to come forward, looks like you are it today. Good morning, Scott.
Andrew Smith, Clickitack County. Thank you, Jacob, for showing up. We're jealous where you're at, warm temperature. The rest of us are sitting in here in nice chilly weather. And it seems like everybody kind of covered all the subjects. Thank goodness Heather said something. I'm appreciative of it, because I found out there is more boxes have been caught on fire throughout our nation now. So this seems to be a copycat thing. That's a little bit more heads up, because I was going to say, can we do more watching on it or something, or at least pulling out our ballots a little faster than normal because of the issues here? I've noticed that. Jail, good luck. And then little updates here. I attended the hospital ribbon cutting, and I went up there to the observatory, and that was great, too. Learned a lot about power grids and everything else. Attended the downstairs meeting also for Goldendale Parks, and that was kind of interesting on that, how that leads out, and how much everybody's involved in everything nowadays. That was something new. So I appreciate all your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Scott, are you coming on after public comment? Okay, okay, just checking. So if there's no one else this morning, we'll move to Commissioners. Jake, if you'd like, I'll go first. I know you have a little bit of distance there. I can probably trim through mine. And Candy, thank you for the update. Everybody needs to hear that. We need every vote we can get in, do a good job this time, and protect the people and vote. But thank you. Roger Nichols, yes. I was just notified this morning that there has been a decision about the FAA water decision for the Dowsport Airport and area. I have to wait to have that update from our prosecuting attorney. So I have all the fine points, so I can't really give you an update further than that. But that's incredible positive movement, and I'm thankful for it. And we'll update you as soon as, as soon as possible, as soon as we can. And Greg Wagner, yes, the franchise agreement, we did hear you. A lot of time had passed. We went back to the auditor, back to Public Works, and we are going to redo those meetings. So you were heard, and I think some different, different things will come out of that scenario, and we'll move forward again. And Mr. Gadway, public interest. I know that there's lots of varied opinions out there, even if you're a commissioner, sometimes our opinions differ. But what I have to say is, I stand on the Planning Department, or the Planning Department and the Planning Commission. They're a board that I really appreciate, and they're a very board of broad interest, so that everybody gets heard. It isn't just a few people that might have a special interest. They spend a lot of time and a lot of due diligence at decisions they make. They also have the backing of legal, and they have the backing of the Planning Department overseeing the work that they do. And so what comes out of that, we can trust it. Although I can say, I still go through everything and look at why they made decisions. And I believe they had the proper oversight, and I believe that the public interest was best served. And that may not be something that you agree with, but it's a multifaceted decision that you have to make to weigh out everybody's interests. And I'd be glad to talk to you privately about why I feel the way I feel. Anytime I would visit with you. Let's see. Sheri, we have a heavy, heavy burden from the state and federal oversight. People talk about our budgets. They talk about planning decisions. We have very little wiggle room. The things we do are scrutinized by the public. The things we do are scrutinized by all the other energies. And we have to come up to speed, and we have to meet the mark with all the state and federal guidelines and regulations. Sometimes we don't even like what we have to do, but sometimes we're stuck within that pocket, and we have to do it legally. Where to go? If you have a complaint or a question or an issue about budgets, check with state auditor. It's pretty self-explanatory. If you have information that you need about planning fish and wildlife, all of those state agencies have their particular subjects they cover, and you're welcome to reach out them and call them, just like you do us. They set the parameters from the top down, unfortunately, from the federal government to the state government to us, what guidelines we have to follow. But you certainly have those resources to go to any of those at the state agency to ask them questions. And Kaylee, thank you for checking in. You shouldn't have been checking in. I'll scold you. Get offline. You're at the hospital today for yourself. Take care of yourself. Am I alone? No, I have all my departments. There are No, I have all my departments, they're all incredible. They are my partners, my directors, my other electeds. And Mr. Anderson is online. So we were able to have a quorum and move forward and pay the bills like we need to and stuff today. So I do appreciate that. But thank you, Kaylee, but turn your, turn your connection off today. Lisa Evans, yes, I'm here and it was 22 degrees coming up this morning. If people don't realize that we live in the Banana Belt down on the Clickcat and over towards the White Salmon. Coming up the hill, I kept watching my thermometer change up and down. When I came to work here, I bought a very big coat to come to Siberia with and I have an extra set of boots in my car. So it's a different climate up here. The farmer ranchers are very hardy, that's what I have to say. I don't know how they do it. Mr. Rizzi. I think the auditor asked your questions, answered your questions. And again, we can't hide anything, just like I explained to Sherry Basque. We can't hide dollars. Not only is the auditor our auditor, she gets audited. So everything gets double, triple checked. Every decision we make is double, triple checked. And if we do anything wrong, we're going to hear from the state for sure. And you don't even have to ask them to do it. They do audits on all kinds of things, land use planning. We're always under the gun to answer the, everything we do, we have to be correct or we'll get in trouble. Gabrielle, the meeting was great. I really appreciated Commerce coming in and I appreciated everybody that attended that meeting. And there were some interesting new ideas. And I was impressed by the people's dedication that are keeping this effort moving, even though the county hasn't been highly involved in the last few years because of everything going on at the county. I think you're going to give us a platform to land on and get running as we turn this corner. And I do appreciate it. Thank you so much. And I think that's it for me. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Candy, thank you for pointing out not to mail in your ballot the last day. I would go one step further and say, try not to mail in your ballot the last two days. I would recommend that you definitely drop it off in the auditor's office or a ballot box during that time, just to be sure. Also, if you turn your ballot in early, you can track that ballot and make sure that it was received. And I, it's great to hear from the auditor that we are implementing every strategy we can to protect the sanctity of the election as we should. Roger, we did receive a letter. I was forwarded that this morning from the prosecuting attorney. I need to talk with the prosecuting attorney before I, if, before I can disclose anything from that letter. There is more work to do, though, from what I've read. Mr. Wagner, my plan is to make a motion to keep the public hearing open until Friday at 5 o'clock to ensure that anybody who did not have a chance to speak today at 1 o'clock can still put in their written comments. Mr. Gadway, with regards to the public interest, and you talked about two specific examples of projects or zone changes that came before, one before the board and one before a hearing examiner. How you define that project, public interest and how you look to that is towards a comprehensive plan. The applicant puts their best foot forward in terms of how their project fits within the comprehensive plan. And the opponents or whoever's opposed puts their best foot forward. And it comes down to either the board accounting commissioners or the hearing examiner has to decide which one more closely aligns and fits with that. And with regards to the hearing for the Snowden Community Council or the Snowden Community, that went in front of the planning commission who also looked at it. So you had two sets who actually looked at that. Sherry, special favors. Let's, let's talk a little bit about special favors. We hear from the same group every week at 9 o'clock. It is a small group. It is not the 22,300 plus people in the county. It's about the same 10 people. If we only did what those 10 people said, that would be pandering to special interests. I just want to be clear that we don't pander to any special interests. Everybody has their own fair shake and the board accounting commissioners takes in all of the information that we're given and makes a rational, logical decision. Kaylee, I did notice that there are two empty seats next to Commissioner Zoller. And I have not heard if Dan is sick or where he is at. But as you can see, I take this job very seriously and I've always called in. I think I have missed one meeting in my four years as county commissioner. And that was back when it was part of the by-state working group for the bridge. And I was in meetings in DC and that's the only meeting I've missed. Lisa, I think our auditor did a great job answering your question. But if you have any other further questions, the auditor is likely the place to go to, not the B O C C if she's in charge of that. Mr. Rizzi. I think the auditor answered a good portion of your question. I can tell you, we are not seeing 1.5 to $2 million. My statement to you last week was, reach out to Jen and have a conversation. And this is not the back and forth part of how the government works in open public meetings. It's not how it's designed. If you have questions, you are always welcome to email or call me and I'll get back to you as soon as I can. And we can talk through any of your issues and I can get you the information that answers your questions if you, for what you have. I'm not here to play politics or sweep anything under the rug. The numbers are the numbers and they are public and they go into the budget process. Last week I was trying to explain the difference between a supplemental budget and the 2025 budget. I'm not trying to attack you in any way. All I want to do is make sure that you have the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you can look at it and critique it from your side. And Gabrielle, thank you for always talking about childcare. Childcare, I'm sorry I was not able to be at the meeting. I'm glad that Commissioner Zoller was and I'm glad that you were. And I can't wait to see some forward momentum and progress with regards to childcare. And I believe that's everything I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Christa. I'm going to add one more comment before we. When I came into this board, the way the elections fall, I was the new commissioner. So I fell into a board that was already functioning. And I think it probably is one of the first times I have ever seen the board comment back with clients, have conversations or with constituents in the room. Usually they open it up for public comment, take your comment and then allow, you can contact the commissioners, write letters, call in or set meetings. I had not seen a board before that allowed this type of interaction where we comment back. So that was interesting that they went a little bit further and tried to appease the public and help you out with what you need to know. So I thought it was gracious of them to do that. Okay. So, Mr. Anderson, we have the consent agenda.
There we go. Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with all seven items.
And I will step down in second. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of $861,268.52 and the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $1,140,351.43 for the date ending October 28th, 2024.
And I'll step down in second. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So we now have an update from our planning director, Scott Edelman.
Morning, Commissioner Zoller, Commissioner Anderson. It's been a busy week already and so I'm less prepared than I was hoping for this.
It's Tuesday.
I know, it feels like it's been a whole week in good ways. Like I said in our budget meeting, I don't think we're too busy. I think we're just the right amount of busy. It's just a matter of catching up with some things that we're behind on. And, but I like how busy we are, especially with some of the new staff coming in. The team is working really well together. I wanted to mention public comment. When I first started, I often started with a note of appreciation. I kind of stopped that because I heard from peer to peer, it got a little annoying. So I don't mean to be annoying, Mr. Pollyanna here. But I do want to say a note of appreciation for public comment, regardless of how it comes in. Sometimes it comes in in less ideal situations where it's maybe not in, it's like not the right format. But as long as it's not about a person in the department, I appreciate any comment that we have. And I want the public and the commissioners to know that we're responding to it. It takes time, like as you deal with, we don't fix everything overnight. But I think especially recently, we've got a lot of public comments from a variety of people that are going to improve the work we do next year, especially as far as getting information out on our website, providing opportunities for the public to be involved in our various processes coming up. I think a lot of these comments we've received are going to improve what we do and how we work with the public and our timelines for review of applications and the way we organize work within the department. So we've got a lot of the things, I think there's a lot of good things coming. And hopefully the public can continue to be patient as we work through some of these, these items. There was a comment on UnderCanvas. I'm not going to talk about UnderCanvas, but the comment was about our role at this point, which isn't approving it or not, it's making sure they meet the conditions. And so that's something else that we're going to be working on. And that's really a priority for me, is making sure that we do site visits, that we follow up on conditions of approval for the various businesses that come about, including UnderCanvas and others, the various energy sites. Not just, I know we're complaint-driven, but I want to be a little more proactive. So that is something, a goal for the next year is to, the conditions that we place on development. To me, that's our contract with the neighbors and the community. And we need to make sure those are followed through. So that's something else that we're going to be working on. I just want to mention our, our team. Thank you. We went through our budget meeting last week and don't know what it's going to turn out, but the commission's been very supportive. I think we're at an awesome place. We, it's a shangaloo Denise, but Rachel's jumping right in, Lori and Rebecca and Debbie are taking leadership roles. And Evan, you'll see later, I mean, the staff report he put together is outstanding. So it's, it's really coming together well and I'm looking forward to, I hope, a long time with this group. Very excited about the future of the planning department. And back to public comment, the reason I brought this up is because we're at a really good time right now. I've been here eight months. Understand the community better, understand a lot of our issues better. This is a great time to bring things to our attention. And it's, any comment is never even negative, even if it's a criticism, I prefer direct. If it's in public, that's fine. I never, as I, as I said, as long as it's not about an individual in the department, I always welcome any kind of criticism because it makes us better. So I just encourage commissioners or the public to bring things to our attention because we're starting with our new team. We're starting to look at ways we can improve and do better as we go into the next year. Couple of updates, planning commission, November 18th is the James Dean aggregate overlay consideration. And then December 16th, the critical areas ordinance. So a couple of big items coming up. We're also, now that Evan is on board, you're going to see a lot of progress with the solar ordinance in particular, but also the comprehensive plan update. We're going to be putting an advertisement out for project advisory committee members coming up very soon for the solar project, as I mentioned in my last update. We're approaching that with a project advisory committee because that requires a little bit more technical expertise. I would say balance, you know, making sure we hear from all sides. And so that, we'll be looking to you, Commissioner Zoller and the others to see how we want to go about selecting that committee. But it's going to be a specific committee of nine to 15 individuals. That's what was in our grant, that's why I say nine to 15. But we bring that to you in some format or another, either recommendation from us or a list of people who are interested. There are a few of the seats that we're going to be recommending specifically. So some will be through application and selection, others we're going to propose. We just have on the invite to be on the committee such as Yakima Nation, PUD, a few others that we think are just important to have at the table. And then the rest, we will suggest either having the commission approve it somewhere or another. So that'll be coming very soon. Meetings on the, we're planning on having the advisory committee meeting starting probably in January, if not sooner, but January I think is our target to get those meetings in so that we can have a draft by the end of June of the solar ordinance. I think that's all that I have that I was going to talk about today.
Great, that was a good report.
Oh, thank you.
No, and I just want to say thank you so much. It's just, I can't believe it's been eight months and you've done so much in that eight, eight months. And I'm very, very thankful that you're here and I'm thankful for the skills that you have and how you use them. You're a great people person, you're a good employee person, team builder, and just your attention to what needs to happen within Clickcat County for the planning. You're really moving us forward and I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. And I appreciate your comments earlier about you not being alone because we're a team, you know. Because of the interview with the three of you, I very much felt like part of the team. And, and when I hear comments about, you know, negative, positive, whatever, toward the commissioners who deal with it directly, take the brunt of it, you know, that reflects on us. So I take those very seriously. So appreciate that and appreciate your comments about the planning commission as well. They take their job very seriously and do a really good job.
You know, and I was going to say that too about the board and the boards you're creating to use, that I was a fan of that before when I was working in another capacity. And you can't do better than citizen review boards. You're going to get a varied opinion about everything. And then putting those other technical people on those, we did in the boards that I ran too. We made sure we had all the particular interests at the table, whether we agreed with them or not. Because you can talk it out at that table and move forward before it gets to here. And then we have some sort of glitch or problem. And I appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree, thank you. And there will be, every meeting will include a public comment period as well. So it's not just that advisory committee, there'll be the public opportunity, whoever wants to be involved.
Right. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Anderson, did you have anything? Not sure. Okay.
No, Madam Chair, I think, I'd just like to say thank you to Scott for his update as always. And thank you for being the consummate professional that you are and always giving thanks to everyone that you deal with on a regular basis. It's how we build up the employees and how we continue to build up this county.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, I appreciate that. And I agree, every department I work with, this is a great place to work.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. So I don't think we have anything else today. We're, Scott, thank you.
Well, not till one.
Thanks for all your help.
And I would be interested in talking about Greg Wagner. I missed his comments because I was on the phone, but I think he brought up something he's brought up to me in emails. But that was that previously the board has held two hearings on items, one in the afternoon, one in the. I wasn't aware of that. So maybe that's something, going into the new year, we could talk about procedures. And if that's something the board would like to do in the future.
Okay. What our policy is.
Yeah.
We'll check it.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are at Commissioner Updates and Miscellaneous. I have nothing for the good of the order, Mr. Anderson, I'm not sure if you do.
No, ma'am.
I'm wondering if we can move forward on anything else. We have about 10 minutes for Public Works until they're up on the agenda. Yes. Yeah. But we'll see if we can get them in a little bit. I think our clerk has something for us.
We were looking at dates for the holiday party for this year. And we wanted to see what the availability and if the commissioners would like either December 5th or just, December 5th or December 12th, right? Yeah.
And then the next day would be the West End.
And the next day would be the West End, that would be a Friday, so the sixth or the 13th.
Okay.
And so.
It's important to choose a date, Mr. Anderson, if you're online to help agree so that they can start planning, so we can plan food and invites to all the departments and get it organized. Because this time will, it'll pass fast.
Yeah.
You know, within four to six weeks, we'll be doing Christmas parties, that's crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah. For me, I like it closer to the holidays. I think the 12th is good because it's not too far in where a lot of people go on vacation.
Right.
We still have. But Mr. Anderson, I don't know what your schedule looks like for the 5th or the 12th. And so it'd be the 5th, 6th and 12th, 13th for the appreciation Christmas dinners for our departments and the other lectures. And if he's still there.
I'm still here, I'm just looking. I can do either one, it's shown on my calendars. But for some reason, I thought we had something on the 5th, but it's not coming up on the calendar.
And I have nothing on mine. And what's it look like for you girls for work and coordinating with the other ones that help you organize?
I think either one, yeah. Whatever the commissioners would like to do. Whatever the commissioners would like to do.
You want to go for the 12th? So we'll save the 12th.
12th, okay.
Because Jake was worried there was something on the 5th we'd miss.
Yeah.
Let's do the 12th.
Let's do the 12th. I, I like it. It's also closer to the holidays as well.
Me too.
So the 12th.
And I'll, and anytime before that, I'm still just going to be full from Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, so we'll plant on the 12th for the East End and then the West End would be on the 13th.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if you hear different, let us know. Thank you. That's a good one. And Public Works made it down our hallway. You're early. Thank you. Come on up, Seth. You can just leave him there. I'm always glad when I don't see a box. Yeah, you're welcome. Yes, we'll visit. I have a list.
Good.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, well, the consent agenda kind of heard that went through, so we'll move on. We have a few pay estimates. It's that time of the month again. First and final for Superior Court solid surfacing in the amount of $29,184.39. And that's to put the countertops on all the counters over in the Superior Court. Pay estimate one is for Superior Court floor covering in the amount of $15,910. That's for all the carpet work over there. Pay estimate four for the Superior Court remodel in the amount of $58,773. And pay estimate five for Sundale Old Highway Eight in the amount of $581,852.424. If I would slow down, I could talk. All those projects are grant funded. Yeah, I'll turn it over to Squirrel.
All right, on construction, we have ongoing with Sundale Old Highway Eight, contractors working on finishing that project up, including the rock servicing, erosion control, some fencing and other site finishing items. Other construction projects were in the closeout phase, so lots of paperwork being exchanged right now. Road design, Sunnyside Road overlay plans and specs are being finalized and working with Crab for approval to go to add. Bridge repair bundles, consultants continuing their work. Bickleton overlay, you saw the notice to contractors was on the consent agenda. It will go to add this week with a bid opening of November 26th. White plastic edge lines, final set of plans is with Wash Dot and wait in their final review. Curve warning signs, continuing to move forward through the design process and Wash Dot approvals. Road safety plan update consultant submitted a scope of work and cost estimates, and we're working forward to get an agreement together for that.
Okay, on the maintenance side, the east side crews are working on the Bickleton Highway project in preparation of the favor Seth was just talking about. We are grading over there and we have a culvert, that culvert installation on Adams Loop Road. West side, we're kind of giving semi-oddity in McAllen roads, a facelift. They're getting a little gravel and brushing in preparation of the winter. Superior Court carpet will be finished this week. There were some places that we need a little bit more carpet on the steps and whatnot. And then there will be just a few minor items left to finish that project off. Events, birthday party last week was, went well with the community center. We seem to be in the birthday party business because we have two more birthday parties for this weekend. One on Saturday in Dallasport and one in the exhibit building on Sunday. So everything else is pretty much the same. Annex four, the fiber installation, the line has been strung and it just needs to be set in or labeled and made the connections. And on the only other thing we have on the good news side, after 15 years, 16 years of being here, that ugly cable that used to string from the courthouse and it used to go to annex two, which sat over here. And then it went from annex two to annex three, annex three to annex one, and that was all our communications. The, the main cable that ran from the courthouse, we took down just the other day. So it is gone. It's not sitting over here, hanging over there. We used to see it. It's gone. I was very happy to take that day. And that's all we have for this week.
You guys are too easy. Doing good. I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson? He's still there?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we will see you later. So Mr. Anderson, we have the pay estimates. Are you still with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve pay estimate number one and final for the Superior Court solid surfacing installation in the amount of $29,184.39.
And I'll step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve pay estimate number one covering the Clicktack County Superior Court floor covering in the amount of $15,910.
I'll step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve pay estimate four for the Clicktack County Superior Court remodel in the amount of $58,773.15.
I'll step, step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Finally, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve pay estimate number five for the Sundale Old Highway Eight CRT 359 in the amount of $581,824.24. And I apologize for the noise.
No problem. I'll step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. That takes care of the pay estimates. So we now have. Ah, Casey, come forward. And we have minutes, so that's perfect. You're, you're taking up time that we needed to shake up. So you can actually drag it out a little.
So the board, well, we are looking for approval. We have a foreman down at the White Salmon Shop that is doing multiple duties for the foreman in the Glenwood Shop. And then the supervisor is going to be.
Out, out on a medical. So we never replay, we typically have each, each area has two foremen.
Okay.
But, you know, we've been down people for so long in the west side. We don't have a foreman that's, that we can move in. So the foreman that's in White Salmon has been doing the full job for both.
Okay.
And that's pretty labor intensive and it'll get worse as it gets, as the winter, yes.
And with the supervisor out, we're looking for an additional 6% of an hourly compensation for him while he's doing the additional duties. We have done it in the past with union employees while they're doing additional duties for an extended amount of time. We had two foremans that were doing the supervisor role before. And so it, it has been done in the past. We did get approval from the union to move forward with this. So if we can get approval to, to do the additional compensation for him doing the extra duties on a temporary basis.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll submit the resolution for that.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, do you have a question?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to make sure that it was on a temporary basis. And do we have any hopes of finding someone to fill that foreman role in the future? Or are we going to have to advertise what is the, what is the direction? Because I don't want this person to get burned out.
What, what we're hoping for is to, we have a, we hired three or four, four new employees. And we're hoping one of them will surface. A couple of them do have some experience. We just have to see how they mesh with the crew. We prefer to hire from within. So what we'll do is, is, you know, once they get more apt in how the relationship forms with the crew, then the whole idea is to hire from within, then we would advertise in-house and one of those people would step up.
So do you have a timeframe? Is that a six month, three month? What do you think?
Probably, probably.
It, it could be through the winter.
Yeah.
We run this way. We don't know. I mean, that's not our goal. Our, my concern is burnout also, because it also puts more on the supervisor too. But it's better to take time and make sure it works with the crews than to risk the continuity of the crew.
Totally understand. Thank you. I'm in favor.
I'm good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're a bit ahead of time, but Mr. Van Cleve, are you ready? We'll have a jail update from Rob Van Cleve.
Morning Commissioners. So I was listening to our planning director and I didn't catch the end of his update. So I hope I'm not the first to respond. I heard Scott, I think basically apologized for being positive, for being Pollyanna, for appreciating public input. And the truth is, we all ought to be more like Scott.
Thank goodness.
And I should be more like Scott. So I don't think Scott should apologize. I think we should all be more like Scott. So.
Thank you.
If we get through this week, like I anticipate, we'll make a formal offer to the jail administrator next week. And then it'll just be working out a start date, but we still have one significant event to get through this week. But I'm hopeful. And then the other issue on the jail I've been working on is trying to separate the contract for the body cams. The contract is approved by the commissioners, but under the sheriff. And the sheriff is requesting that we separate that agreement or get a new agreement. So I met with the three gentlemen from various places in the country yesterday. They're going to work on options for us to, so that the corrections officers can continue to have body cameras, which is an officer safety issue.
Thank you.
So they're, they'll get back to us as soon as they can. So that's the, the big process thing that we've been working on. So I'm looking forward to successfully getting through this week and getting the new person hired and handing it all over to the new person.
It's going to be a great.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
That's it.
I appreciate it. Yeah, it's, it's great. We're getting so close.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Amazing amount of hurdles to hire somebody that's competent.
Yep.
Amazing.
Lengthy process.
Yes. Yeah.
So.
Thank you. Anything from you, Mr. Anderson? Okay.
Thank you.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So we have quite a bit of time until our next update from our Columbia River Gorge Commission Representative Val Fowler. So I can sign documents or work on some things, or do we have anything to fill our gap that we need?
Is there anything on our old business that we haven't talked about in a while that we need to push a little bit more? I don't have that document in front of us, in front of me.
I don't see or can't think of anything under old business that we haven't touched on, that we need to update. We're doing pretty good keeping up to date and moving through. The departments are doing really well and moving forward and are managed well. So that keeps us organized. I see I had, are these for anybody?
Oh, those are for Public Works.
Okay. I didn't see, I thought we were doing boundary line adjustment or something. I didn't see them on our agenda. So all I have, Mr. Anderson, so you know in front of me are Public Works documents that need to be signed for Box Springs overlay vicinity, their, their mapping system. Certify that for them.
Okay, you should have utility permits too, right?
Are those in the consent agenda or in the agenda that permits? I think they were signed last week because I think you're right, I did see them. But thank you for checking on them. Okay.
Would you prefer to recess until Ms. Fowler?
And I think Scott came back in for something. So we're going to have our planning director come back up and then, then maybe we would take a short recess after this.
Well, you can recess if you want to, but I heard he had some time. And I try to be aware of your time when I do my reports, since there's extra. I'll throw this out there, and this might be something that you communicate with me directly on, the two of you, or you can talk about now. I've talked about the two different approaches we're taking to the projects, the solar ordinance, which includes battery energy storage systems and the comprehensive plan. One, we're doing a project advisory committee, which is the solar ordinance because we feel that that requires a little bit more specific interest or knowledge, technical expertise. We want to be a little more targeted about who is providing the guidance to the planning committee that'll eventually go to the planning commission. So there will be public process through the planning commission ultimately, but they'll get a recommendation from the PAC, the Project Advisory Committee. The comprehensive plan update is going to be led by the planning commission directly with open meetings for each of their meetings, because to me that is, it's there, right in their wheelhouse. That's what they do. That's, that's, you know, their guiding document. So they should be the ones who deal with that. So we're not going to be forming a specific committee for that. We're going to be having for the, for the comprehensive plan update, it'll be the planning commission with whoever wants to come and participate. And we will target people to invite and try to advertise it and get as many people as we can. So what I wanted to talk to you about, since there's a little bit of time, is the advisory committee for the solar ordinance. That is Evan, Lori and I met yesterday and we're talking about who we want to target as we advertise. The advertisement that goes in the paper will be for the general public because we want people from the general public who are interested to apply and participate. But we also would like to have some targeted invitations. Those invitations would include someone from the PUD. We'd like to make sure that we have somebody representing each, I would say an at-large person from all three of the districts, just to make sure we cover the county. Where emergency management, so one of the fire districts. And we'd like to include, include somebody. We'd like to include one or more representatives from the industry, from solar, wind, some kind of energy. I, I think we'd probably want a couple. We'd like to have landowners, like to have farmers who understand the potential impacts to the farm. And I would like to include at least one member of the planning commission. Since it's a legislative decision, there's no conflict of interest. They don't, they don't have to, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be all within one. So I'd like to include one or two planning commission members. I would like to ask the board of commissioners, who are we missing? You know, in, in general category, who should we target? And again, this isn't a question to put you on the spot. This is something that maybe you email me later, let me know. It's not something that, there's no requirements. This is who we want to target and ultimately it will come to you. And we'd ask you for the blessing on who we include on that committee ultimately anyway. But any input that you have as to who we should be specifically inviting other than the at-large people from the community, we'd, we'd like to know. Because we definitely want to have a balanced group to, to consider all perspectives. The second question that I would bring to you, we were trying to figure out for, for the comprehensive plan update, that's with the planning commission, those will be evening meetings. That's the easy, easy decision. That's just when they meet. That's, and we want the general public to be available. With the project advisory committee meetings. With the project advisory committee meetings for the solar ordinance, you know, a good portion of those are people who will be doing it as part of their jobs, not just volunteers from the community. All are equally valuable. So what I've seen in the past, my past experience, usually those kind of meetings are held late afternoon to try to accommodate people who are working to make it and not have to work beyond their hours, but also to allow the public to participate, usually three to five or four to six. Our proposal at this point, and I'm asking now because we're gonna be advertising, we're gonna be asking people if they're interested, so people will be calling, asking, well, what's the commitment? We want to be able to say it's gonna be up to six meetings from January to June. We'll hold those on Wednesday from four to six, for example. Does that seem like an acceptable approach to the Commissioners? And again, don't have to respond it now, but to hold those, to try to accommodate both the working people who are doing as part of their job and the public to do it from four to six or three to five, and just any input you have, we would appreciate. But at the, this current point, our proposal is to do them from four to six on Wednesdays.
Every week?
Not every week. It probably, we're not sure about that. That's a good question, because our grant says that we're gonna do up to six meetings. We don't know yet if we're gonna do those monthly, or if we'll do those every three weeks. We're still working on a few of those details. Um, I'm thinking we might try to compact it more and be more like every three or four weeks, rather than a specific day each month.
So the grant says up to six.
Up to six, yeah.
Okay.
And that was in on purpose, because we didn't know. Maybe after four meetings, they've got their recommendation, they're ready to go. Or maybe it'll require all six, or it could even be more, uh, just the grant says up to six is what we'll have to justify. So any input that you have would be helpful as we formulate the committee and talk about how we're going to approach it. We're also talking about public input, because we know people who are not on the committee will be interested in providing comments. Um, I've seen those handled different ways. Sometimes they do public comment at the beginning, sometimes at the end, sometimes both. Generally, if it's only at the end, the complaints you get are, well, my comments weren't considered by the committee, so you usually want it at the front. But then also there's sometimes complaints that, well, I had thoughts at the end of the meeting that they want to comment. So we may consider both, but any input that you have would be great as we start working toward this.
Do you have any suggestions, Mr. Anderson, or do you just want to send emails to Scott?
Um, I'll talk to Scott offline, but what he's, uh, brought forward sounds like a good plan to me.
And, um, one caution is, bigger the board, the more controversy. I don't want to restrict anybody ever, but sometimes it's hard to get through your meetings.
Well, that's, that's a very good point. And in our grant, we said nine to fifteen, so I think we'll shoot for closer to nine. Uh, but when we bring it to you, you might see people that, oh, we have several, you know, it might, I think it will, who applies may affect how many we have on the board, on the committee.
I sure hope that you have somebody that will coordinate with you on natural resource and water issues. Those being separate, because you have, uh, the fish and wildlife issues, you have indigenous species issues, somebody with expertise that can represent kind of those natural resource communities and all the things that that could impact, and also water's very important.
I appreciate that feedback. Um, and that brings me to another aspect, what we're looking at. We're looking at having the committee itself and then support for the committee, which would include economic development department, natural resources, planning, you know, the staff that would kind of be there to assist with information. But it'd be good to have somebody who's actually there representing that. Do you have? If you have any thoughts, let me know.
Okay, I'll let you know.
Who we could reach out to.
I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Because I have a few that you could reach out to, maybe.
Great.
So, and I think you might have some landowners that have some expertise that are maybe retired now, but have that background, and maybe they'd want to sit in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
I appreciate people that want to sit on committees.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
It's hard to find them. Yeah. Yeah, we've been getting a lot of interest lately about committees, though, which is good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that back. Yeah. What do you think about a recess until eleven? Mr. Anderson, would, could you entertain a motion for recess?
Uh, we don't need a motion, but I would make a motion, uh, to recess until eleven.
Okay. And I'll second. Thank you. We'll be back at eleven. It is eleven o'clock. Welcome back from recess. We're gonna start with Val Fowler from, as our Columbia River Gorge representative.
That's exactly right. Thank you very much, Chair Zoller, um, and Commissioner Anderson, online, um, virtually. Uh, I did not come with a prepared agenda today. Um, I really wanted to sort of, uh, free-flowingly talk about some of the things that are going on at the Gorge Commission. I would say that Executive Director Christina Wolinakowski is on leave this week, and, um, Alyssa said that we'd still like to keep it today, so I am representing, um, happily. Um, it's always a delight to come up to Goldendale, um, not only for the scenery, but for the conversations, um, with the Commissioners, um, and to update the public listening in as well. Um, as many of you know, uh, the Gorge Commission has, um, the overarching mandate to protect the natural, cultural, recreational, and scenic resources of the gorge, um, and to empower or support economic development consistent with the first. Um, uh, it has started to, uh, uh, irk me a little bit, um, uh, candidly, um, with the emphasis on the protection of resources and the, uh, discouragement, in many cases, of economic development. And I, I believe we're responsible for, for both premises, or both, uh, parts of the National Scenic Act. And so I was looking at the landing page of the Gorge Commission some time ago, and, um, there's, as a lifelong, um, public affairs and communications professional, uh, before I became a farmer, um, in the gorge, uh, I know that how you present your vision, uh, introduces you as, as a person or as a group to those who are interested in learning more. And the landing page talks about, um, protecting the four resources and encouraging economic development in our many small cities and towns. Now, um, uh, my counterpart from Wasco County pointed out in the last Gorge Commission meeting that the DOWs is not a small city or town, it's an economic driver for the region. And although five of the thirteen urban areas are included, uh, are in Clicktack County, five of the thirteen urban areas designated in the National Scenic Act. We don't have the largest with the DOWs, uh, nor Hood River, but White Salmon, Binge, and Lyle are all included. And, um, yet I don't see the, um, I don't see the encouragement in how we present ourselves to encourage economic development or support economic development outside the cities and towns. And being a farmer, uh, I know that there are a lot of, there's a lot of economic development and a lot of economic, um, revenue in Clicktack, in Wasco, in Hood River County, in Skamamia County, that comes from agriculture of all types, orchardists, wine grape growers, such as myself. Um, we are not in the small cities and towns. We're not even in the large cities or towns. And so we had a interesting, I thought, very engaging, uh, respectful, professional conversation that lasted about an hour in the last, last Gorge Commission meeting, talking about what is the vision of the Gorge Commission. Um, and, uh, I confess I sparked it, um, but I was not, um, by no means the only participant. In fact, most of the Commissioners had, um, thoughtful and insightful things, uh, to say. And I think we're going to be spending some time in the coming months and maybe years trying to figure out how we can best support the National Scenic Acts, two important, um, foundational, um, instructions, as well as, um, doing so to the benefit of those who live and work in the gorge. Um, want to raise their families here, want to be able to afford to live here, um, all of these issues. Um, and, and I'm, I, I'm not, um, as interested in, um, a tagline that could be put on a bumper sticker, live, work, play, um, or anything like that. I, I'm much more interested in delving into how we can help the communities and those who comprise the communities. Um, we have, as a Gorge Commission, not been seen as, historically, I am reliably informed by many people, including many people in Clicktack County, that we have not always been seen as a, um, caring, uh, partner, if you will, for those who live here. And I think there is an ethos now among the Gorge Commissioners with, um, with some new folks on, uh, and really dynamic folks on the Commission to address that in, in the way that we, um, do outreach, the way that we try to engage, um, our communities, and the way that we see our work. Um, one of our, um, Warm Springs members, um, noted that when we use the phrase mission statement, it, it comes with a lot of negative baggage for people. So we've been trying to turn our, um, and, and just this week, President Biden, um, issued an apology to indigenous Americans for, um, uh, the more, the eighteen sixty, eighteen seventy-one to nineteen sixty-nine practice of removing children from homes, um, uh, and, and from indigenous homes. And, um, so it strikes me that the, that I, that I had never thought about words like mission statement. It's been some sort of a bureaucratic phrase you always use. Um, but vision statement is a much more accessible term. And, and so one of the things we're also trying to be cognizant of is being as accessible as possible to our, um, communities. So I guess that's where I wanted to start, um, and would welcome any questions. I have one more sort of tangent to go down, um, if you've got time.
Yes. Do you want to start with this one and then move to the next tangent? That's great. I am really impressed, and I'm, I'm really thankful that you're taking this route, and after learning your past year, on your journey with the Gorge Commission, you've landed on this. I think it's perfect, and I think it's what our communities are looking for. Um, because it wasn't inclusive in the past, I believe there's a lot of suspicion. And there wasn't a way to get everybody together to start going in the same direction. Uh, and I'd written down to ask you if they had a vision statement.
Um, no, um, they have a mission statement further in, and it's this, it's the, the, the two parts of the act that I referenced, and that's listed as the mission statement. It's not easy to find on the website. The website is undergoing a complete revamp, um, that is, uh, ongoing and ongoing. Um, and I'm not sure we've got, uh, we, we hope by summertime, um, or so, um, there may be late February, March, we get a preview of it, parts of it, but hopefully by summer we'll have a new website. And at one point Christina said it's like trying to use a rotary phone to send a text message, um, describing the website, and I think that's accurate. My, um, my, I'm gonna say concern is that when you go to the front page, you, you see that tagline underneath, which is a perfect place to put a vision statement. But it turns out that in the robust conversation, I don't think there was a single Commissioner, Gorge Commissioner, that loves the statement, or even maybe wouldn't uh, change parts of it. Um, so to present that first and foremost, um, which apparently has been on the website since the website was started in twenty sixteen.
It's been a lot of years.
So I am guilty for not really paying attention to it for a year. But when I did, I started thinking about how it affects people's view of what we do, and I, I'm not really comfortable with how that is projected. And so, uh, we are having conversations, and I think it will continue, about what is the vision? It's gonna be cracking complex, because, um, you've got, um, so many different communities involved in different, um, uh, frame of references. Um, many of us would put natural resources at the top of any list. Others would certainly put scenic resources at the top, and other, including organizations that regularly engage with us. So it, it figuring out how we can describe it, um, as inclusively as possible without, um, without unintentionally using language, um, that, uh, is, it makes us less accessible. That's another word I've just really started picking up on is the accessibility. Um, uh, and that's not only, uh, language-wise. Uh, we have a lot of Spanish-speaking residents in our communities, and, uh, um, hopefully with AI, we've got ways to start doing more translation. Um, our budget is not robust to do, the Gorge Commission's budget is not robust to do translation um, across the scope of what we present to the public, but AI may be changing that. I'd love to see more materials in Spanish. I'd love to see them, you know, AI, maybe do an AI translation and then have a Spanish expert, um, QAQC, Quality Assurance, Quality Control, sorry, acronyms.